Thank you for your patience. It was one of those extraordinary days in council, we went very late. And I do know that my colleagues, Councilman Inglis will be joining us, and I believe Councilman Rizar will not. I'm understanding that Councilman Inglis is on his way. It's now been about a half hour, and I apologize for the delay. Everything's been pushed back about a half hour to an hour. So I beg your indulgence. It's a few more minutes, and we should start pretty soon. And just bear with me. So as soon as he gets here, we'll get started. Again, thank you for your patience, and we'll be right back to you. Thank you.
I ran across from you. My uncle was killed November 12th, 1994. It's been in cold case this whole time. My former boss, Officer Reserve Officer Greg Smith, picked up a case four years ago. He's been working on it every week for four years. And just solved it all. I'm meeting with him to tell me all these guys.
Okay. Welcome to Planning and Management Committee. Again, thank you for your patience. Roberto, I want to read into the record the item in front of us.
Sure, council members. Item one, and this is the main item, is a communication from the Planning Commission. It has to do with proposed general plan amendments, zone change, height district change, relative to the proposed USC specific plan.
Okay, so this was continued from September 18th?
Right.
And we wanted to focus on reviewing the progress reports. I think we've made a lot of progress and a good amount of traction. I want to thank Councilmember Perry for stewardship and forming the negotiating team. I understand on a parallel track, there was a series of meetings between the city family and the parties representing the USC master plan development. And what I'd like to do is jump right into the CLA report, if I may, unless planning has anything urgent to share on the record, but if we can have the...
Yeah, no, Rahalia Flores Planning Department will be happy to respond to the CLA, to the CLA report once the CLA goes through it.
Okay. So I understand that Avak, will you be representing the CLA and describing our status and the nature of the development agreement and the results of the negotiating team?
Yes.
It's all yours, Avak. Avak, let me just take a moment and just take a long look at you, because this is the first time in my 12 years that I will hear you present in front of a committee. Well, at least for me.
Definitely my first time.
Okay, it's a first. Big drum roll. This is Kodak moment. Thanks, Avak. You know, I had to tease you.
No photographer?
Okay, you want the photographer? I'm sure we have one in the house.
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the committee. My name is Avak Kataian. I'm with the Office of the Chief Legislative Analyst, and I would like to briefly go over the points contained in our report dated October 5, which comprise the negotiated benefits package. As you are aware, our office, representatives of the mayor, Housing Department, and the city administrative officer met with USC and have put together this deal, if you will, which presumably represents the final agreement. The elements of this agreement are as follows. Number one, contributions to affordable housing. USC will agree to increase its contribution to affordable housing from $8 million to up to $20 million. Number two, construction of new student beds. USC will build 3,000 net new beds of student housing in the first phase of development at SubArea 3. USC will not voluntarily demolish any existing student housing in SubArea 3 until after USC has completed construction of the 3,000 new, net new beds. Number three, project labor agreement. USC will include in the project labor agreement various local hire and disadvantaged worker hire goals of 30% and 10% respectively. And this hire will be from two areas, the first tier being within a five-mile radius of the project site, and the second tier being the city of Los Angeles in general. Number four, local hiring. USC will agree to establish a 30% local hire goal for permanent jobs in University Village. This is for permanent jobs. USC will also establish a 10% disadvantaged worker hire goal. Number five, procurement. USC will agree to a 15% goal for local procurement. Number six, minority and small business commitments. USC will establish goals for contracts and subcontracts awarded during the construction of the project, and this will include monitoring and reporting requirements. Those are 25% small business, 20% minority business, 5% women, and 3% DBE. Number seven, small business assistance. USC will pursue, will provide a list of current tenants at University Village in good standing. They will meet and confer with standing tenants before demolishing University Village, and they will pursue good faith efforts to retain these tenants for the future University Village development. Number eight, legal assistance for affordable housing tenants. USC will create a legal clinic in the law school to provide legal assistance to tenants currently living in affordable housing. Number nine, there will be, the deal or the agreement calls for modifications to the specific plan, four of them as follows. Perimeter projects, the agreement calls for deletion of the exposition Vermont and Figueroa Streets from the definition of perimeter projects. Secondly, fences. USC shall be able to build new fences adjacent to residential open space as security and safety may require. Number three, design guidelines. USC shall be able to move forward on development of buildings in SubAreas 1 and 2 prior to approval of the design guidelines by the CPC. And lastly, development standards, modify the setback and step-back requirements for SubArea 3 to allow for construction of an academic tower at the northeast corner of McClintock and Jefferson, and a residential tower at a mid-block location along McClintock. This, in short, is the deal.
Thank you, Avak. And folks, the banter before Avak started, the reason why I'm teasing him is I first met Avak back in 1982, and we got pictures to prove that. And to have him to present to me in committee today is special, so thank you, Avak. And I was a graduate student then, too. In all seriousness, folks, that is the development agreement points that were submitted to this committee as a result of negotiations that was put together by Councilmember Perry. A lot of effort went into it. I want to thank Mercedes Marquez for her support and work in that effort. Thank you, Mercedes, for your hard work. I do believe you had a representative from the mayor's office there as well, and Jerry Miller, and then the folks that represent USC. Thank you for your due diligence and responding and reaching these agreements. What I'd like to do next is ask the council offices of the area if they would like to speak and present first, or would you rather I go to public comment first and then speak last? Public comment first? Okay, so we have both representatives here. And thank you, Wazalupen. Planning Department, given the agreement that was just shared for public record, do you have any comments before we go into public comment? And I'd like for you to stay at the desk, because once we finish public comment, if there are any other questions we might have, I'd like to have you respond. But are there any responses or comments at this time, given what was just stated for the public record?
Faisal Roble, City Planning Department. The four items that have been cited vis-à-vis the urban design, specific plan issues that happen to be in the agreement raises some sort of, if you will, disarticulation with the CPC recommendations that we have forwarded to the committee at our last hearing. So yes, we have issues to pick, and the way we would like to probably is either present those issue right now or wait till we come to the issue, because we have, we intend to present to you technical corrections to the specific plan, secret findings to be placed into the record, and then see areas where those issues deviate from the CPC recommendations. So we have issues.
Okay. So let's do this. Will the applicants, as they're represented, for the applicants to like to speak. I do have the cards here, but I don't see anyone specifically representing USC that would want to come to the microphone. If not, I'll just go through the cards.
Good afternoon, Chairman Reyes and Councilmember...
If you could just strain out that microphone, we'll hear you a lot better. There you go.
Yeah, my comments will be brief. The negotiating team, I also want to thank the cities, the members of the cities team, as well as the USC team. We worked in earnest to craft an agreement that we viewed as a win-win-win, a win for the community, a win for the university, and a win for the broader city. We think that agreement is fair and that it should be adopted in total. And like in all negotiations, there's give and take. The definition of a good deal is no one is completely happy, but this is one where on balance, it is the right deal, and quite frankly, it is time for us to move forward now. We've got these fellows and women in the audience here who are ready to go to work, and once we have our entitlements, we will move forward. So with that, I urge you to move the matter forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sales, and thank you for your commitment and your hard work in this process as well. Thank you, sir. Okay, so we'll dig into the cards that have been marked as support. And we have Robbie Hunter and Michael Garagos. Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon. Robbie Hunter of the Building Trades. And we've worked with USC for two years and negotiate a local hire on the construction project itself. We have set a standard for emasculated youth, for children, young people who come out of the foster care system, a preference for veterans, 30% minimum within a radius of five miles, and then the LA City zip codes. This is going to be a great project, and maybe I could have the construction workers stand up. Many of these people live in the zip code. They are the work, they live in the community, went to high school there, and this project will put them to work, and we're hoping for a speedy approval. Thank you, sir.
Someone will give you a tomb-a-bond moment. What are the mascots of the local high schools?
Oh. Karun, what's your mascot?
Yeah, mascot of your high school.
Come on, guys.
Yeah, Jefferson.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, Robbie.
Well, you're not asking for mine, are you?
Well, thank you, folks. And that was right on its face. Okay. No kidding.
Hello, my name is Michael Garrigus, and I'm the student body president of USC. I represent over 17,000 undergraduate students. I'm very much enjoying being here, because I think it's important for me as a student representative to give perspective on the student's stance on this issue. Over 90% of the people that we surveyed at the end of last semester were either in support or strongly support this plan as it stands. But as we know, this isn't only about USC and its students, it's about the community. And this is why, in conjunction with the senior administration, we held various stakeholder meetings and forums to discuss any potential issues that could be caused from this plan. No one makes it more clear to me and the student government and the students that this isn't only about us, it's about the community than the senior administration that you see behind us. The creation of 12,000 jobs and the impact that this would make on the surrounding community cannot be delayed any longer, and this is why I stress you to please approve and recommend the plan. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate that. We do have one minute per speaker, so I appreciate your cooperation. Bertrand, Perdomo, Chriselda Bonilla, and Pat Stewart. Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon, council member, Ed Reyes. My name is Bertrand, and the mascot for my high school is the Toilers at Manuel Arts High.
All right, the Toilers.
I graduated in 2007, and fellow schools are the Democrats at Jefferson High. I am from the neighborhood, and I've lived there for 23 years, which is my age. I'm also a resident of the neighborhood where Councilwoman Jan Perry is, and I'm in full support. I really think that this project and this development is what my community deserves, South Los Angeles. Our community deserves something to be proud of. It doesn't have, they don't have to travel to the Americana or the Grove to really enjoy and feel safe and to really enjoy this project. And the university has taken on full responsibility to really bring this to South Los Angeles. And I think that my mother deserves better, that my sister deserves better, all, you know, members of our community. And, you know, this is the final push, and I'll say that this is going to be one of the best projects in our neighborhood, and South LA and South Los Angeles residents deserve it. Thank you.
Good for you. Thank you, sir. Our next speaker.
Good afternoon, my name is Chriselda Bonilla, and I have been living in this community for 13 years. I'm a proud resident of this community, and I have raised my daughters in this community. Like everyone else, I just want the best for this community. And here this afternoon, I speak in support of the specific plan, and I am very excited, because I will have the chance to take my daughter shopping just two blocks around from where we live. And just, I just want to say thanks to USC. Thank you very much, because my daughters are going to have a very, very better future, and I will have a better future here in this community, too. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please give us your name.
Hi, good afternoon, my name is Pat Stewart. I'm a representative for IBW Local 11. We represent 7,500 members, many whom live in the area, and we're real excited about this project. We all know we need jobs, but this project creates good jobs with benefits and wages and pension, and it changes people's lives. And I know what that's like. I wasn't always the paragon of virtue standing before you. 30 years ago, I was struggling, sleeping on a couch, going to the beach every day, and although that's not a bad gig, it didn't pay too well. And I got in the trade, and you fast forward 30 years later, have a house, I have a son in high school, I have a daughter that I got to put through college, and that opportunity came from jobs like this. So let's change some lives for some other people and move forward with this project. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next group of speakers, Jim Robinson, Johnny O'Kane, Jim Robinson, Johnny O'Kane, Priscilla Chang. Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon, I'm Jim Robinson. I live on St. James Park, a few blocks north of USC. I actually didn't know when I came here that USC had reached an agreement that it can live with. I'm very happy to hear that, and I urge you to support the best thing that's come down to our neighborhood in decades. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker.
Good afternoon, Johnny O'Kane. I represent ironworkers in Los Angeles. We've gone through this before. You've got a university with their own money, their own land. I've got members behind me here that have been out of work. I want to make it harder to find them during a weekday, and got guys that grew up in that neighborhood right there, they still live there, and they're ready to go to work. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your presence. Thank you very much. Okay, Priscilla Chang, David Roberts, and I believe it's Rachel Torres.
Good afternoon, council members. Priscilla Chang with the Los Angeles County Federation of Labor, representing hundreds of thousands of union members, working families who not only live but also work in this great city and county. We're here today in proud support of this project, because it creates good union jobs. Yesterday, we were in a, Marielena Adrazu couldn't make it, my boss and I were at a meeting full of sheet metal workers, and there were retirees who are receiving their 50-year metal pins. And they said, when I had my first sheet metal worker job, union job, I thought it was just going to be a job, but it's led it to a career, that they've been able to, alongside their family, be able to send their kids to school and put food on the table. And that's what this project's going to do for hundreds, thousands of families throughout our communities. Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, David Roberts, in full support of this project. This is going to be the largest project in South Los Angeles's history. We need the jobs, we need the services, we need the new taxes that will be generated by this project. The community is probably unanimously in support of the additional services and jobs that will be brought here. In fact, I was at a community meeting last night and mentioned the possibility of a Trader Joe's coming to South Los Angeles here at this project, and you almost got a standing ovation. I think the development agreement by the negotiating team, put together by the mayor and the CLA's office, is a big step forward. This is a much better deal than it was a couple of months back, and I'd also applaud USC's government community relations and civic engagement efforts. You know, I know there were some rumors about claims of extortion by community members, especially to some prominent clergy in the area. That's not a way to negotiate in good faith. But specifically when it comes to jobs, this is about 40% unemployment in the local area, and the opportunity to create local job opportunities.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. I know you're on a roll there, but I'm sorry, we're trying to keep the... Okay.
Good afternoon, my name's Rachel Torres. I'm a research analyst for Unite Here Local 11. We represent about over 800 members on campus at USC, 20,000 members throughout the region, and we want to express our strong support of this project moving forward today and voted at city council very soon. We're really proud of what USC has accomplished, and to create thousands of good jobs for construction, hospitality, and food service workers. We also know that, you know, today USC is a good employer as a local hiring employer. In our membership alone, we know that there is a good percentage of our folks that come from the local community, and so we know that they will continue that moving forward with the specific plan. Los Angeles is poised to get working people back to work and out of this long-term recession, and we're pleased that LA's largest private employer is part of that economic recovery plan and sets the standard for future development. So we're really excited about this project and moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, these next group of speakers are under general comment. And again, one minute each, please. Paulina Gonzalez, Nancy Halpern. Nancy Halpern.
Good morning, my name is Paulina Gonzalez, Executive Director of Sage. The city and USC deserve credit in achieving significant advancements in the development agreement in recent weeks, in particular requirements detailing the construction of net new student beds and increases in investments on affordable housing. We feel the DA and the specific plan are very close, and we applaud the hard work of the city as well as the mayor's office and the impacted council districts. There are still a few areas that can be adjusted at minimal cost with great benefit to the city, the University of Southern California, and to the local community residents and the USC Nexus Study Area. You will hear more today about, from the coalition, about the areas we hope can be improved. We will be meeting with USC tomorrow with the hope that we can resolve these remaining issues so that we can all stand proudly in support of this project before it goes to the full city council. Re-engaging with the university is a positive step, and we hope that our discussion with them will result in a plan that further benefits the city, the university, and the community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Nancy Halpern.
Good afternoon, my name is Nancy Halpern-Ibrahim. I'm the Executive Director of Esperanza Community Housing, and the word esperanza, of course, means hope. I stand here today as a member of the Unidad Coalition, and we recognize the substantial progress on the development agreement and applaud the hard work that has been done at the level of the city, the mayor's office, and the University of Southern California. The university's commitment to affordable housing investments are an important step toward curbing displacement in the neighborhoods surrounding USC's campus. Of course, to have the desired effect of limiting displacement around USC, the Affordable Housing Funds need to be designated only for the USC Nexus Study Area. We are hopeful that through conformance with the development agreement that USC offers on-campus housing to at least seventy percent of the total University Park campus undergraduate population, and we want to see as many families as possible continuing to live in our community.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Sandra McNeil. Kaitan Sharma, I believe. Hi, good afternoon.
Thank you, councilmember. Good afternoon, Sandra McNeil, Executive Director with Trust South LA with the Unidad Coalition. The CLA's report indicates that the USC's Law School will create a legal clinic for tenants of affordable housing. The concepts in the report are excellent, but we'd like to recommend refinements. First, the legal clinic should be for tenants of affordable housing, including but not limited to RSO units and other low-cost units in the Nexus Study Area. Without making this distinction, many at-risk tenants would be denied access to these important services. Second, the USC Gold School of Law should work in collaboration with local community groups who serve tenants in the Nexus Study Area to best coordinate the coverage of tenant rights services and to share resources or best practices when appropriate. Lastly, another point about the mention in the CLA report of fences. Green space and open space are tremendously important to the community and shouldn't be unnecessarily fenced off. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Joe Donlin. Please come on up, sir. Come on up. I called your name.
I'm not sure. I just want to make sure.
What's your name?
Kaitan Sharma.
Yes, please, go ahead.
Good afternoon, my name is Kaitan Sharma. I own Wendy's at SC. I've appeared before this committee twice, before today and expressed my concern, and twice with SC to make you aware of the economic impact this project will have on my thirty-five employees and my family. To date, all there is to show for this effort is one paragraph under the heading Small Business Assistance. I would hardly call sitting down with a business prior to demolition to talk about best effort to have us in the new project, business assistance. What about the next two years of employees of Wendy's? What employment opportunity will they have till the new Wendy's may or may not return to SC? What about the fact that I could not sell my business that I would build upon for the last twenty-two years? The economic impact to me and my employees are devastating, but no one wants to talk about it. We have been thrown out without any assistance. I and other impacted businesses at SC were given the impression something more significant would be considered beside a few words for sort of refusal. I ask on my behalf and my employees and my family that the real business assistance be required as part of SC project. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Joe Donlin with Sage and the Unidad Coalition. It's encouraging to see the improvements made by the city and USC around local hiring and disadvantaged worker hiring for permanent jobs. A few key additional points will help strengthen these commitments. For permanent jobs, the local hire goal can be raised to forty percent, with half or twenty percent required to come from high poverty zip codes in a first-tier two-mile radius, and the remaining half from high poverty zip codes in a five-mile radius. Further, we echo the Community Development Department's call for USC to make a three million dollar contribution to job training for local workers, which is a necessary component of an effective pipeline for local workers to reach the jobs created by the project. All these additions can be easily achieved, especially in coordination with local community-based job prep and placement groups who work together as a coalition. And we encourage there to be a contribution to support community-based implementation of this local hiring program. Lastly, reporting and monitoring of the jobs in all parts of the DA is important so that the city, the university, and the community can work together to achieve the most positive benefits for all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Nona Randwa. Sahira Mann. Benjamin Torres. And Maria Paz Jane, I believe. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, my name is Nona Randwa, Attorney for the Legal Aid Foundation of Los Angeles, representing members of Unidad. Last time we were here, the SEQA findings for the project were being revised. It was acknowledged by the city attorney and counsel for USC that due process necessitated a public hearing on the revised findings, and the city attorney recommended thirty days' notice once the findings were published. The new findings were released on October 5th. Because of the significant environmental impacts identified in the EIR, these findings are required to be made for the approval of the project. Due process requires notice and a hearing before the government deprives someone of a significant property interest. This includes situations where, as here, a proposed development poses a substantial impact to neighboring properties. In this vein, SEQA strongly encourages public hearings with notice given in the same form and time as other city public hearings. In this case, the municipal code imposes a twenty-four-day notice for a public hearing on proposed land use ordinances. This requirement should be applied prior to the upcoming hearing to allow the public adequate time to review the revised findings, which are significantly changed and which are required to be made before the land use ordinances can be approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon, sir.
Benjamin Torres, President, City Tech. Good afternoon. Want to also say that we're very happy with the progress that's been made and the negotiations with CLA's report. We do feel there is something that can still be done specifically around the job training for local residents. As has been mentioned, the Community Development Department recommended that three million dollars be put aside to actually do job training for local residents to be able to fulfill that requirement, so we're looking forward to seeing that come to life, as well as the small business community that's currently at the village. There's nothing in the CLA that provides any sort of right of first refusal with realistic subsidies for people to be able to come back to the same amount of square footage that's been available for them, as well as relocation costs and relocation assistance, as well as some of the leases that some of the small businesses have are not equal in terms of length. So we'd like to see some of that language be put into the agreement going forward, and thank you very much for your leadership on this work.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your time. Next speaker, please. Please say your name, por favor.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Maria Paz Jaen.
Good afternoon, my name is Maria Paz Jaen.
Jaen. Soy parte de la coalición de unidad.
I'm part of the Coalition of Unity.
Tengo treinta y nueve años viviendo en mi comunidad.
I've been living in my community for thirty-nine years.
Les presento más de las mil veintisiete cartas comunitarias, copias de las más de mil veintisiete cartas comunitarias que mis vecinos firmaron empezando el mes de septiembre.
I'm presenting to you more than one thousand twenty-seven letters from the neighbors in my community that were signed in the month of September.
Hasta hoy llegamos a mil veintisiete.
Until today, we have arrived at one thousand and twenty-seven.
Mis vecinos firmaron esta carta, estas cartas porque queremos asegurar que las necesidades de la comunidad estén siempre al frente para mantener nuestros hogares, nuestros trabajos, y quedarnos en nuestra comunidad.
My neighbors signed these letters because we want to assure that the necessities of the community are always at the front in order to, for us to maintain our homes, our jobs, and to stay and enjoy our community.
Es, no estamos en contra de los avances y de los estudiantes. Estamos muy contentos de que los estudiantes se beneficien.
We're not against moving forward and against the students. We are very happy for the students to be, to receive a benefit off of all this.
Es la realización de los sueños de sus padres y de ellos mismos.
That is a realization of their dreams and of their parents and of themselves.
Por lo tanto, estamos contentos.
Therefore, we're happy.
Y finalmente nos gustaría conocer el progreso de parte de USC y la unidad para llegar a un acuerdo significante especial alrededor de las viviendas accesibles.
And finally, we would like to recognize the progress of, on behalf of USC and the city, to come to an accordance and a significant agreement, especially around the affordable housing. Thank you for your attention.
Gracias por su atención.
Gracias a usted, señora. Gracias por estar aquí.
Max Heiland. Reverend Walter Contreras. That's Max Heiland, Reverend Walter Contreras, and David Kim. Please give us your name.
Hi, my name is Max Heiland. I am a recent alumni of the University of Southern California, and I am here in support of the Unidad Coalition. I'm one of over fifty recent students, recent alumni and students who signed a petition for this hearing specifically to express support for improving USC's development plan to make sure that families are not displaced. Students and community residents share a common interest, and that is affordable student housing, on-campus affordable housing. And we would like to, we are happy with some of the provisions that USC has extended in expanding their on-campus student housing plans, but we need these units to be affordable, or some of them to be affordable, or else students will continue to go out into the community and displace residents if they cannot find affordable housing through USC. This petition I would like to submit for the official record.
Please submit it to the clerk.
Thank you.
We'll get the sergeant to get it from you. Okay, next speaker, please give us your name.
Reverend Walter Contreras. I represent twelve hundred congregations, Latino congregations, but behind me, we have many members of our Clue, Los Angeles Black and Brown Coalition, and we are standing with Unidad Coalition today, and we are pleased at the progress that has been made, and we're really excited that we can really come together and on a united front and make the best for our people. We encourage USC to meet with Unidad Coalition to resolve any outstanding issues. So on behalf of all the congregations, that we have many of them that serve this community, we ask, and we also say thank you for everything.
Thank you, sir, and thank you all for your patience and your cooperation. Our next group of speakers, we have David Kim.
Good afternoon, my name is David Kim. I'm the franchisee of Denny's Restaurant, and I wanted to bring up an issue. We're all supportive of what's going on with the development of the project, but what's, what we're concerned about are some of the details that surrounds the development agreement, especially what it reads is that USC will, in good faith, negotiate with current tenants to whether we're going to stay in and go forward. But it's been years that USC has reached out to us, and they still don't have a full plan of what they're going to do with the current tenants that are occupying there. I've been here for seventeen years. Some of our employees have been here for almost seventeen years, and we just would like some transparency and some discussions with USC to see what it is that they are going to go forward with the current tenants. We've proposed, and other agencies have proposed maybe some relocation money or some first right of refusals, but none of the people at USC has actually come forward and asked for a meeting. So we'd appreciate if we can have a transparent communication.
Thank you, Mr. Kim. Thank you very much, and thank you for your patience. Adriana Al Swain.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Okay, we see in the faces of the new employees building, but here's a few faces of the ones that's going to be losing their jobs. I'm Adriana Swain, and I've been a server at Denny's USC for the past twelve years. We have over fifty-two employees, and many of them have been working there since it opened. We are very unhappy with how USC has treated our businesses at the village. USC will force businesses to close down. The impact will provide a tremendous economical hardship on my family and families of other employees in the village. USC has a moral and economic responsibility to help the local economy and its surrounding neighbors. I think that they should be honest and reliable and communicate with the businesses at the village. They should provide relocation assistance from USC within the local community. They should provide a plan of insurance for the business spots in the new village. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Please give us your name.
Good evening, my name is Isaac Magadam. I have a beauty salon in University Village in past thirty-seven years. I would just find out that USC will force my business to close down and impact my business, my family, and family of my employee. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for taking the time. Come on up.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, councilmembers. My name is John Ortiaga. I'm the owner of the bicycle store in the University Village. I have four employees that work for me and been serving the community, the USC students, and the school faculty for a little over twelve years. I'm here to express my concern in how we, the retail businesses in the University Village, will be displaced from our place of businesses and in the manner in which it is being done by USC. Although the University Village is the heart of the new development, the existing businesses are off, are being displaced with no communication from USC and with very little consideration on the economic impact that this displacement will have on the affected families. This displacement will economically affect over two hundred families. I feel that the council has an obligation to these families to compel the USC to assist businesses in the village as conditioned to grant the approval of the development project. Assistance would entail, but not be limited to, right of first refusal, guaranteed subsidized rents for a predetermined period.
Thank you, sir. Do you want to finish? Did you want to finish?
Yes.
One more sentence, go ahead.
Provide relocation assistance and establish a small business oversight committee to negotiate with USC on issues related to these items. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we have, please come on up. You probably have your card here.
I'm Jung Chi Chung at the Village Menbach. What is it just to lose my business and dream before we had a way to pay our bill? Now we don't. It has been taken away from me. We have no way to pay our bill, any hope of retirement. I am unhappy with how USC has trained and my business. They have not communicated with me in so many years, even though I have tried to communicate with them. What is your application? What is your first step to make money or to help the business member over you, you be? They need it. I want a life in the Los Angeles, but I am being pushed away. Please let me stay in Los Angeles. Can you see me before your dream come true? Can you see me? Thank you.
Please give us your name.
My name is Ju Young. I'm working at USC ten years. My business name is Manaje Penis Grill. And I have four employees. I'm unhappy with how USC has trained me and my business. They have not communicated with me in over years, even though I have tried to communicate with them. USC will force my business to close down and impact my business, my family, and the families of all my employees with, will provide a tremendous economic hardship. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Tin. I have bought my business life seven years ago, now by Wendy, and then I'm not happy with USC that they have not communicated with us life or anything about that plan, so I didn't know anything, so I worry and concerned by my business closed down, and then I lost my business, and I have no money to buy another business, and I hope that USC can, you know, relocate it or at least give me, like, back my business with Lorraine or something like that. Thank you.
Okay, and I'm sorry, your name again?
My name is Tin Nguyen.
Tin Nguyen, okay.
Yeah.
Let me call up the next group. We have, um, gosh. Ron Mohammed. Ron Mohammed with Kebab Master.
Yes, hi.
Then Cheryl Kwan. Okay, come on up. Tsushima Patel. And Jose Ruiz. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, how are you?
Okay.
I work in the village.
I work in the village of USC for Kebab Master. My name is Rahim Mohammed. It's kind of hard because you get a lot of, you don't get no communication, and a lot of people, they will ask you, you just get lost, like, nobody tells us like if we're leaving or if we're staying, and you get confused with customers that are coming, so it's basically like it's depressing, like, for a person, like, who's trying to build their business, and all of a sudden, like, you get a lot of, like, asking, and you just get lost. So we hope that they communicate with us much, so we know what we can do, or they relocate us somehow. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker, come on up.
Hi, my name is Cheryl, oh, sorry.
That's okay.
Hi. Hi, my name is Cheryl Kwan. I'm from Food Corps University Village. Basically, today I'm here to ask one question to the city officials, USC officials, and USC alumni. How would you like it if your greatest asset, investment, or career is left in total jeopardy of loss? For more than three years, USC has not communicated anything official to us tenants, and we are basically left in the dark. Okay, so many business owners in USC, University Village, has spent a lot of years there and invested a lot of money, and they were hoping that they would retire with the business there. However, the way it looks is not happening. The USC is saying that their specific plan is benefiting to the community, but how is it benefiting to the community if it's going to jeopardize some of our lives here?
Can you finish?
Okay, bottom line is, I think the city should look into the plan, and before you're signing off, you should, like, something should be negotiated for the small business owners, so we can move on, or, you know, we have some futures here. Okay, we don't want to lose everything that we have there, and that's where we bring our bread and education to our children.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
Please give us your name.
My name is Sushma Patel, and we are here at University Village for twelve years. We have a test of India restaurant, and we are unhappy with the result of negotiation between city and USC, and we want to know how they're going to provide us relocation, or what they're going to do with our business. And the negotiator mentions that the USC will pursue in good faith of efforts, so we want to know what is the good faith of effort means, and when USC has not contacted or communicated with us within three years, that's my point. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jose Ruiz. And our last speaker will be John Walsh.
Hi, my name is Jose Ruiz. I'm working in Dollar Dollar Store, and like me, we are a worker, worried about this project because we are dependent of this job for family. We are a lot of employees in that village, and we are working there, and we are worried about it, because in this year is coming, have happened with us, you know, and, you know, it's not easy now to find any job in other places. It's hard now, but we are worried for this one. It's just my point. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Who's our last speaker?
John Walsh, HigHlandes.org, one million two hundred and fifty thousand successful server requests since September first, two thousand and eleven, from people watching. I just want to tell you, you people from USC, we've had the city come in, and I want you to know what happens when this, you know, their jobs, their jobs, and I want you to know what they do. Come to Hollywood and see what it's like. See how they've torn, destroyed our neighborhoods. See how they put up forty-story buildings right now, which will destroy Alaska. It will destroy our tundra. See what they're doing to us. See how they crowd us together. See how they added in Hollywood. The streets are not for black people or for Hispanics. They are for rich white people. Come to my neighborhood and see what happens, and that's what they're going to do to your neighborhood.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. That does conclude, that does conclude public comment. It's been a long day, folks. I do want to ask the council offices, if they'd like to, for the record. Give us their position and their point of view.
Good afternoon, my name is Stephanie Magnin Rockwell, representing Councilwoman Jan Perry. The negotiating team, which is of course comprised of the CLA, CAO, mayor's office, and USC, have brought forward an agreement which represents a lot of progress, which has been made over the course of these discussions. And she is supportive of moving this item forward today with regards to the development agreement. However, she does have concerns with the modifications to the specific plan which have been requested by the university, and requests that the CPC report be honored today.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, council members. Pauri Doshi with Councilmember Parks Office. Councilmember Parks is really pleased at the progress that has been made by the negotiating committee. He does, however, have three items that he considers vital to mitigating the expansion of USC through the specific plan. Those three items are the extension of street scape improvements in bike lane. USC has committed in their letters to both CPC and Plum to extending the street improvements and bike lanes along Jefferson West to Western Avenue. And we also would like to see Hoover, which has been in discussions in the past, Hoover going from Jefferson North to the Ten Freeway. We'd like to see those improvements there. The restoration and stabilization of the North University Park community. This neighborhood has been impacted by the university's expansion over the last fifty to sixty years, and USC has made several verbal agreements in the past to help address this problem by offering low-cost loans for homeowners to rehabilitate these homes in these neighborhoods back to their previous designation. So we ask that the university honor that, those past commitments. If they're unable to, we would like for them to possibly contribute some seed money to LAHD's plans to start a pilot program for addressing those issues in those neighborhoods. The third issue is the retention and/or relocation plan for the existing retail tenants. The demolition of University Village is going to displace several small businesses. These businesses should be given right of first refusal upon completion of the project, or relocation assistance if they're unable to remain at the site. This is in accordance with the city's policies on tenant relocation for businesses and tenants. We suggest that the university follow CRA's policies on that issue. And lastly, USC submitted a letter today prior to the hearing requesting several deviations from the specific plan. Many of these requests deviate significantly from the direction given by city planning, and we ask that those not be taken under consideration today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. My understanding is that, and I just want to be very clear, I want to thank again the negotiating team. My understanding is that the report has indicated by our CLA that the summary that was put in record is what reflects how the negotiating team concluded its process. Would that be an accurate statement? Alak?
Yes, it is.
Yes, it is. Okay. So in terms of the planning department, my understanding is that, given what was stated in the development agreement, that there are areas that are consistent with the CPC, and other areas that could be addressed through processes and mechanisms that would allow for the capacity to address these maybe differences, if you will. Would that be accurate?
Yes, that would be accurate, yeah.
Okay. Councilor England, are there any other questions, observations?
Yes, a few observations. First, I want to thank all those who have worked so diligently in this process, and it's not just the negotiating team. It goes far beyond when that was even constructed and developed as a team that's done a good job, but first, the neighbors that have lived there for a long time, and have been impacted and benefited from USC, and have worked diligently and working to compromise to protect the community, but improve the community as well at the same time, to the businesses in the village that are looking for answers. I hope that the council offices will continue to work with the university to bring you those, and I think there are solutions that are available. But to the university and the construction workers and all those who have been fighting to get this project done for the right reasons, this started off as a very good project. It's ended up as a great project, and there's been a lot of compromise of movement on everybody's end to work together. Just when I thought, in reading all these documents, I think we've killed a lot of trees in this process, that, I don't know how we can get things even much better. They come in, and you got into a lot of details, a lot about the PLA, and how close people will live in proximity, and what those folks, who they will be, making sure that we put the right people back to work, and not bring them in from out of town, but we put local people back to work. A lot of the efforts that have been made, so not just our labor partners, but with the city family, with the planning department, with the city attorney's office, this has been a huge project and battle, quite frankly, and getting everybody on the same page to agree was a huge task that, you know, I don't like to do this often, and he gets embarrassed, but a lot of the credit, and he doesn't like to take credit for things, but when you're talking about a huge project that will forever change the face of the area and the community for the better, when it's twenty years from now, we'll be driving by there and say, hey, we had part of that. We made history and improved not only the students' lives, and the faculty, and the staff, but the people that live around there as well, and the community, that we all had a part in that, that there was job training and housing set aside to help improve them, those lives, and the lives of generations to come, was also somebody that doesn't get a lot of credit, and that's Ed Reyes, because we've got a council member here who, as a chairman of this committee, it's like steering the Titanic, let me tell you, and we didn't sink this time, and he saved everybody on the boat, and it wasn't rearranging the deck chairs. It was trying to listen to all these issues for a long time, and so if there's anybody, I think, that really deserves also a round of applause in any of this, and I'm so grateful that we're able to actually vote on this and move this to council, but if we can give our chairman of the committee a round of applause for the stewardship of this, it's well deserved. Thank you.
Believe me, I didn't pay him to say that. But thank you, Mitch. Thank you for your heartfelt thanks, but it's truly a reflection of the folks that were up late at night. USC, thank you for never giving up, and truly reflecting the spirit of the Trojan in addressing the needs of the community. We're here today, there could be a little bit more traction we can get, but I'm very, very happy and very grateful for your posture and moving this to this point. To the community folks, as Mitch said, you live there, you're there twenty-four hours, and again, this is a great city. It's a big city, very diverse, and so how we deal with our creative tension is important, and how we address the needs of our children, our families, and the health of our communities, and I thank you for your diligence and your tenacity. To the city family, Mercedes, thank you so much. You, your staff, the CAO, the CLA, the planning department, you guys, all of you are the unsung heroes. The city attorney's office, thank you so much. I want to thank Wada Loop and Rebecca from my office for their, their just stick-to-tiveness. We just got to keep pushing. So thank you very much, and again, I believe we have enough on the table, where we can move this forward. I do recognize the letter that came in in the last twenty-four hours from the USC representatives. What I'd like to do is move forward with these directions and get this to the council floor, and if there are any issues there that you feel compelled to address, you have fifteen council members to choose from that might want to introduce a motion of sorts. But now we take it to the next level. I think it's imperative that we begin that clock where we can say jobs where we created. We've made it long enough, and I think we've drilled down to the furthest point we can at this level of the process. So thank you, Mitch, again, for your kind words. Is there anything else that you want to say before I give the directives and the planning department? Again, thank you, guys. How long have you been at this? I just want the people to know how long you've been at this.
Chairman, as soon as you gave us the chance, first of all, planning department has been working on this for about four years, and as the senior city planner for this project, I honestly like to recognize Michelle and Rojario, who did an exemplary work. They may never get this chance, senior, get up and give them this chance, but I want to recognize them.
Okay, great. Thank you, Rojario. Thank you, Michelle. Thank you very much. From the CLA's office, anything else we should be putting on record? Anything else, city attorney? No? Okay, so let's go with these directives, and again, thank you. Thank you so much. Here we go. We can, one, approve the June first, two thousand and twelve City Planning Commission recommendations and technical corrections submitted by planning today, and amendments submitted by the planning department on September eighteenth, two thousand and twelve. Any items remaining not otherwise addressed as follows are in the CLA report shall be deferred to city council for decision. Two, request the city attorney to prepare and present an ordinance authorizing a development agreement between USC and the city, and an ordinance for the USC University Park campus specific plan. Approve amendments to the City Planning Commission recommendations submitted by the planning department on October tenth, two thousand and twelve. Four, recommend that the council adopt environmental findings and statements of overriding consideration, and the revisions submitted by the planning department on October tenth, two thousand and twelve. Five, approve the CLA recommendations contained in its October fifth, two thousand and twelve report to the Plum Committee as follows. Instruct the city attorney to amend the development agreement to incorporate the memorandum of understanding for the replacement of fire station fifteen. B, instruct the city attorney with the assistance of the planning department and other departments and offices, as necessary, to amend the development agreement to incorporate changes to the committee benefits agreement made by the committee. And I believe that will encapsulate all of our actions, and I'm sure Jerry Miller is having a cold one at this moment, knowing that we got to this point. Anything I left out, Roberto? We have a...
To certify...
Just a minute, Roberto. Make your mic sound. Go ahead.
Councilman, as to item four that you read, it should have been that the council certified the environmental findings rather than adopt, and that's a recommendation from the planning department.
Okay, so we will include that correction on item number four as one of our recommendations. Okay, anything else?
Yes, just one quick clarification on that. I think it's certify the final environmental impact report and adopt the findings as environmental clearance for this project.
Okay. So is that clear?
Yes. And you read the statement of overriding considerations, which was included in item four.
Right.
You read that. That's...
Okay, I'm pretty sure I did. Okay. All right, folks. Mr. Sales, we're on. Okay, thank you so much. Congratulations, everybody. That's the action of this committee, and is there a schedule for council? That's the action of this committee and is there a schedule for council?
No official vote.
Councilman Englander?
Oh, I think we had to take an official vote, so I just wanted to say fight on. We'll see you at the council. Congratulations.
All right. Good job, Englander. Thank you, Mitch. Is there a date for council?
Councilman, there's item two on the agenda, the weekly report.
Ah.
So I don't know if you want to consider that.
Is our director planning here?
Mr. Bell is here.
Mr. Bell, would you want to fit in? Would you like to share some thoughts or are we okay? Go ahead. Committee still on?
I'll make this very, very briefly.
Okay.
One of the issues that the planning department has been struggling with has been personnel issues and I just want to report that we have made job offers within the last month to seven new planning assistants. We're very happy to get this additional assistance and the city's managed hiring committee also approved twenty-two additional positions, backfill for the planning department. So this will go a long way towards improving our work program. We are also in the middle of having a promotional examination with the personnel department. We'll be able to promote six persons within the planning department at the supervisory level. Obviously, in terms of major projects, USC is one of the major projects that has moved forward, the stadium and then also NBC Universal, the planning commission moved that and they will be coming back to the commission in the end of October on the sign program portion of that. Zoning code reform, an important issue for the planning department. We received six proposals to our RFP to rewrite the city's entire zoning code and the city attorney recently transmitted to the city council an important, as part of the financing of that proposal, an increase in the general plan maintenance fee. It's my understanding that will be calendared for council action on November the second. And then finally, as far as ordinances, I know an ordinance very important to council District One, the Cornfield Oreo Seco specific plan.
Wow.
Will be on commission tomorrow morning.
Great.
So it's a very, an important milestone in terms of revitalization of the river and then also the Mira ordinance will also be on commission tomorrow.
When's the last time we addressed or brought a specific plan to this level of completion?
It's been, it's been a while and this is, we consider this to probably to be the most innovative specific plan that we are moving forward through the process. We really see this as a way, as a model of how we do transit-oriented planning in the city. So just my, my final comment is at the mayor's housing summit at UCLA, the mayor previewed the appointment of a housing cabinet focused on transit-oriented planning and this is through an executive directive from the mayor to establish this cabinet. As you know, we received substantial funding from MTA to do transit-oriented planning and this is going to provide a framer for advancing that planning in the city.
Beautiful. Well, thank you for your hard work, thank the staff and again, when you have forty percent of your department gone, to continue pushing as hard as you are and the city attorney's office for producing ordinances, given their condition as far as personnel and, and the challenges, I want to thank you all for your hard work.
I think it's been, I think it's been about eight years since we've been able to hire anybody, so we're very happy that we're getting some new blood in the department.
Great. Okay, so no other comments? Saying none? Anybody here for public comment? General public comment? Saying none, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.